I worked twenty, twenty years for these chairs.
Mr. McGee, I forgot to ask you to do one thing during your prayer, so I'll just put it out there right now. Robert Edmonds is not with us tonight. His mother fell yesterday morning and broke her hip and had to have surgery yesterday afternoon, so when, uh, when you say your prayers tonight, please, please, uh, add Mrs. Edmonds and, and the family. She's, uh, she's a wonderful lady and I really hate to see her suffer like that, but, uh, let me call this meeting over. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. I don't have any, uh, any announcements tonight, so we're gonna move right on to the roll call.
David Hurst.
Here.
Frank Cash.
Present.
Vance Williamson.
Here.
Judy Ward.
Here.
Willie McGee.
Present.
Roy Bullock.
Present.
Buddy McAdams.
Here.
And Diane Hammond.
Here.
Okay, we do have a forum. Uh, you've been provided a copy of the minutes dated December fourteenth, twenty-three.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion second. Any questions, any comments?
I, I do have a question there.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you've mentioned that we were, had a service agreement, or was developing a service agreement for, uh, MAD.
We will, I spoke with Ms. Griffin on the way in, uh, we are updating that, uh, we're gonna be dealing with, uh, some funding for her tonight, and once we approve that, we'll have an updated service agreement.
Well, that was my question, uh, you talked about, we would be given information as how we can fund MAD.
That's what Mr. Down is gonna be talking about.
I didn't talk to Mr. Down, I was talking to you when we were talking about that. It had to do with the legislative audit finding that we were, we couldn't fund MAD.
No, that wasn't in the audit.
I believe it was.
No, sir.
It-
There was question as to the contract being not quite explicit enough as to the use of the money and the control the city had.
What contract was that? I've never seen a contract, or we have some lease agreements with the MAD.
Well, the lease agreement was the contract I'm talking about, sir. And a lease agreement is a valid contract.
Well, legislative auditor said that we couldn't provide them money 'cause they agreed to pay for all the expenses under that contract.
Oh, well then, you read a different, you read a different, uh, document than I did, sir.
I don't know why it would be a legislative audit finding if that wasn't true.
Sir, I think you need to go back and read it one more time.
Okay, let it rip.
Madam Clerk.
David Hurst.
Hi.
Willie McGee.
Hi.
Frank Cash.
Hi.
Roy Bullock.
Hi.
Buddy McAdams.
Hi.
Vance Williamson.
Uh.
Judy Ward.
Uh.
And Diane Hammond.
Uh.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I have no unfinished business in front of us tonight, so I'll move right to new business. We have the reappointment of Sarah Kaufman to the Eldorado Works Board. Sarah, I think everybody knows you, so wave, smile, jump up, whatever you'd like to do. So, she has been placed in nomination for reappointment. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Thank you.
Just make a statement, and I know I make this statement all the time. I know, I know when people be reappointed to these commissions and sometimes you can't find no one to actually be on these commission, but, but I talked with somebody the other day and they said they had a lot of applications. I, I just think we sit in the presence, when we don't change new positions and new people, that it really just stagnates the old way of doing things, if we won't. I truly think we need, and I'm not trying to badmouth nobody, 'cause I'm sixty-three years of age, I just think until we start trying to get young people on these boards so we can prepare to pass the torch and educate them on how government works in this city and around, I just truly think we gonna be in the same, uh, vision of doing things, and it just really bothers me that, that we don't just give other people a chance to govern or help govern. Now, I don't have a problem with this Sarah, uh, uh, I guess everybody thinks she doing great and that's a good thing, but I have a problem in the way we just keep re- appointing somebody to these positions over and over, and if not, we shuffle them around. And that's a problem for me. Now, that might not be a problem for nobody else, but how can we get new ideas and new way of looking things if we keep the same old, um, person? And that's a problem for me. Um, for us to be in these seats, we have to get out there, tell people our ideas, and they have to vote on us. And, and if they don't believe in what we're doing or feel like we representing them well, uh, we don't sit in these seats. But if we sit here and we got people who know everybody and give a home to everybody, and we hang out with these folks, it's hard to replace these people, 'cause they are friends. But this, this shouldn't be about a friendship thing, this should be trying to motivate and educate and promote our city to the next level. And that's with new ideas, fresh blood. I, I would love to live to be a hundred, but I hope I do, but if I don't, I hope I done to prepare somebody or talk to somebody who can sit in their seat, or any of these seats. Like, we had the young people here at the last seat council meeting. I thought that was awesome thing, 'cause we had two young men walked up and said they wanna sit in these seats. But unless we give them a chance to learn it, they won't be able to sit in these seats, and that's just my comment.
Okay.
You need to just confidence tie him up, what, when, what-
Twenty seconds.
Yeah, sure.
I just served one term.
Uh-huh.
And, and, and this will be my first, uh, my second term, and, and I believe it was up the end of January?
Her original term will expire in January twenty-fourth.
Okay.
That, that's, that's what I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. You can take it however you want.
Well, we let it expire then, why can't we let it go for another couple of weeks until we see if it like-
You take it however you wanna take it, I'm just saying, I just see us while in the same old pond.
Okay. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we have a motion and a second on the floor. There's no further discussion. Madam Clerk, call her over.
Judy Ward.
Hi.
Roy Bullock.
Hi.
David Hurst.
Hi.
Diane Hammond.
Uh.
Willie McGee.
Hi.
Vance Williamson.
Uh.
Frank Cash.
No.
Buddy McAdams.
Hi.
Okay, Mr. Downham, you're up next, a funding request.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one funding request to present to you tonight. It, we, I, I think earlier this week, I sent the budget included in the, in the email for the place gate at the Murphy Arts District. This is a funding request that we have approved three previous years. Uh, the first year we approved four hundred thousand, then three hundred thousand, and then last year we dropped it to two hundred thousand. The request this year is for, uh, two hundred thousand, uh, equal to what we did last year. And the reason for the difference is, the first year of the operation, they weren't really sure on the budget, so we ended up overfunding what they spent, so we made adjustments in subsequent years to try to keep the cumulative spend in line with what we had approved from a funding standpoint. So, we're continuing that, that trend, that in year two, we were over a little bit, we dropped it down last year. Uh, last year we funded less than their actual expenses, about fifty thousand dollars or so. This year they're projecting about two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in expenses, and we're funding it at two hundred, trying to, like I said, to continue to keep those expenses in line with the funding, uh, that we would provide. Historically, this has come out of the community development category. Couple of things to note, if you remember on the attachment, the attendance, uh, from twenty-two to twenty-three grew by about six thousand individuals, and they physically have people at the gates clicking and, and, uh, keeping track of, of the number of, uh, participants, and then also they introduced this past year some summer kids activities that they said were well received by the community, and they plan to continue, uh, continue that, but also grow and do some other things to offer additional programs to the community. And Ms. Griffin's here tonight, if there's any additional questions that I might not be able to, to address.
Now, what was the amount now?
The amount, the funding request this year is two hundred. They're expecting us to have about two hundred seventy-five thousand to operate, so they're asking for less than that. And then, once again, as has been the practice for the last couple of years, Murphy USA will match the city's contribution to this, uh, dollar for dollar, so the two hundred becomes four hundred, uh, to help out the Murphy Arts District.
So, there is no additional service agreement, other than the original contract that the city entered in with MAD a number of years ago? Is that it? There's no other documents?
There's a contract for services.
Pardon?
There's a contract for services.
Where is that at?
It's filed.
Pardon?
Is, is it fired at the end of last year and we'll need to renew it if this funding is approved?
That's my understanding as well, that we-
So, we don't have one yet, we don't have a service agreement.
Mr. Hash, I've made it very clear to Ms. Griffin that no funds will be distributed until we have a valid contract in hand.
It'd be good if you shared that information with us, and it wouldn't have to go back and forth fishing for clarity here.
There wouldn't be a reason for a contract if there's no agreement, yet.
Well, the agreement goes back when we originally leased that property.
That's over.
What?
That's over.
No, it's not, it's perpetual.
We have an agreement every year.
No, we don't. No, we do not.
Well, just to clarify, yes, there, what we're doing here is, is operating under a separate agreement for services between MAD and the city to provide the place gate. And there, my understanding is there's been a contract in place every year that covers this funding.
Correct.
I'd like to see that, I don't know about it. The original agreement was, when we signed that property over to MAD, that they would incur all expenses, all expenses, operating the whole business.
That's a completely separate contract.
But we need to get this stuff out and straightened out. If we don't have one now, we need to wait.
Mr. Down, this, my understanding also is that this is part of the original, uh, tax allotted to the, uh, Murphy Arts District.
No, there's nothing in there under Murphy Ar-
On the ballot issue, there was.
No, it's not on the ballot, it's not even, it wasn't mentioned on the ballot. I'll sit down and match item for item with you. But the legislative auditor has found in ninety, or what is this, twenty-one, that we should've spent that four hundred thousand dollars down there.
That's not what it said.
Pardon?
I, I do not interpret that as what that says.
Well, I do, I'll sit down with you.
Our municipal attorney didn't represent that, that way, and neither did Murphy Arts District Attorney, Mr. Shepherd, represent that way. You were the only person-
He's something writing.
-that said that.
From the resolution that was passed, um, May seventh, twenty fifteen, it was for ten, ten years, festival city development, we'd receive twelve percent, and you're saying that's still coming from that twelve percent?
Correct.
Correct?
Well, so in looking at the numbers, we, for direct funding to festival cities, the amount that we've provided from Eldorado Works gets currently below the, what we've collected and what we project to collect. For the last three years, we've taken this funding for the splash pad and out of the community development line item. So, there's, if you look at them together, then we are a little bit over the cumulative twelve percent. But historically, as I said, we've, we've approved this out of community development, 'cause it, it really fits better as a contract for services rather than infrastructure, uh, for MAD.
Well, the twenty-twenty-one audit says we're doing this wrong. The legislative audit finding.
Mr. Downham, what's your recommendation?
The recommendation of our board was to approve the funding for the twenty-twenty-four, uh, season at two hundred thousand to be paid quarterly in arrears, subject to an appropriate contract between the city and MAD for services.
I make a motion to approve that funding request.
I'll second. Any other, any other discussion? About, Madam Clerk?
Diane Hammond.
Uh.
Vance Williamson.
Uh.
Roy Bullock.
Hi.
Judy Ward.
Hi.
Frank Cash.
No.
Willie McGee.
Uh.
David Hurst.
Hi.
And Buddy McAdams.
Hi.
Mr. Downham, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the last thing, last thing on the new business agenda. Uh, Fire Chief has a couple of vehicles he needs to recycle into the, into the world, uh, and, uh, our city attorney is MIA tonight, so Madam Clerk, would you mind?
A resolution authorizing the sale of used city vehicles at public auction, whereas the City of Eldorado Fire Department has used vehicles that are no longer of use or value to the City of Eldorado, and whereas a public, public auction is a proper procedure for the city dispose of used vehicles. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eldorado, Arkansas, that the following list of vehicles may be offered for sale at public auction to the highest bidder at said auction. Training two R, inventory ID two nine seven five six, two thousand nine Chevy Malibu, E five inventory number six six, or six five six five, a nineteen ninety-two quality Spartan. The mayor or the mayor's authorized representative is hereby authorized to execute any documents necessary to finalize the sale and transfer of ownership to the successful bidder. When the vehicle or equipment is sold at said auction, it shall be removed from the city's inventory.
Okay, this is the, if I'm correct, Chief, this is the fire truck that the new one we've just taken possession of is replacing, and it is a thirty-two-year-old fire truck, so it, it's seen a lot of service, so. Any questions?
I make a motion to approve.
But I do have a question. Since it's a fire truck and this is gonna be at a public auction, it's not gonna be in Eldorado, where do you take this to, to auction it?
It, it will be here in Eldorado.
Here?
Uh, Davis and Associates has-
Okay.
-has auctioned our last several fire trucks, and they have gotten, um, uh, a good value for those, uh, um, that group over there will start in the morning advertising for the March auction, and so, um, I don't know if you've dealt with Mr. Davis very much, but he, he, um, actively seeks out bidders for large items like this, and it usually has pretty, pretty good turnout.
It's good that it's local.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I do know that there are some, um, uh, local industry and, uh, some of the outlying volunteer departments that's, that's always interested in our, our used equipment, and so hopefully, uh, those folks will be present too as well, so.
Thank you.
And the Malibu is the last, is one of those hybrids that we've finally getting into service life, so.
Any other questions? If not, Madam Clerk?
Frank Cash.
Hi.
Willie McGee.
Hi.
Judy Ward.
Hi.
Diane Hammond.
Hi.
Roy Bullock.
Hi.
David Hurst.
Hi.
Vance Williamson.
Uh.
And Buddy McAdams.
Hi.
Okay, taking care of that, uh, we're down to item number seven, other business.
Mayor, can I, I got a couple of things, and I promise you I'll be short. Um, I will try to be in my five minutes. Um, I had a little situation with the auditorium the other day, and it, we had set the auditorium, uh, I had got the date set back in December the fifteenth. Uh, I had talked with, uh, the Public Work Director, he just talked to Ms. Debbie and said that day was clear. So, our little group decided to start putting out flyers and information and organizing groups to come in and out of town, Little Rock, Shreveport, all of this, and then the other day, I get a call from Ms. Beth, um, Brumlin, saying that she was over booking the auditorium, which I didn't know that, and that she had took over the duties of, uh, scheduling, I guess, whatever else, but the first question, do we, we pay her a salary or something?
Yes, she, she's been hired by, uh, Robert to take that, take that burden off of Debbie, she, Debbie just doesn't have time to do it in an appropriate fashion.
And, and, right, 'cause it's been so many double bookings, but I don't see why I should've had to change my event because of somebody else's mistake, and I understood that, I, I tru- I truly do understand that, and that was one of the things that we had, the first reason we took it from Ms. Debbie, because we was having a lot of double bookings and a lot of mistakes. Now, um, I was called, I don't know if whoever else was called, to ask to relocate our event. Uh, if people don't know, this is actually Black History Month, um, but it's for everybody, this not for the black people to come celebrate Black History Month, this, this for everybody. And if we trying to bring this city together, we wanna support every event, this Eldorado event, whether it's downtown, whether it's the rodeo, whatever it is, we have to start dr- showing our people that whatever event go on, it's important to everybody. Then we had a group, I think it was the orchestra, said they had the building, I never saw nothing posted, I remember Ms., uh, Sarah coming up saying they was gonna do something in February, but they never had a date. I had a date, I had a set date, and I had to get with my, um, people and I, our group that we actually do that, Ms. Crell, um, Ms. Kelsey, uh, Jackson, Mr. Amika Morgan, these people worked hard on contacting people, we trying, was trying to raise money, 'cause we had a small budget, we don't have a big budget, we got a small budget, and then we was pushed aside, and I understand, the mayor and them was in a, a rock and a hard place, uh, I guess Robert was in the middle of a rock and a hard place, but we the one got pushed aside. And I went through the process that I was told that we do to make sure that we could get the auditorium, and I followed that process, and I wanted to know why it was so easily to contact me, and for me to be the bigger guy and us to be the bigger group to say, "Well, we'll do what we can," so this mean we got to redo all the information, all the location, all this stuff that we done spend two months doing, just because one person want, wanted, want, want the auditorium. And, and I talked to the mayor before I came in here, this system been broke for a long time, but the people who seem to suffer for it is the one that follow the process. When we had Mr. White down there running it, everything went smoothly, it was no problem. Then we took it back, fired him for whatever reason, and then we took and gave it back to Ms. Debbie where the problem began. I'm not saying Ms. Debbie, he just, but she got, he just said she got a lot going on. So, that really bothers me. The other thing bothers me, that when Mr. Choak was the councilman, he made a proposal for us to pay Main Street fifteen thousand dollars for them to take over the auditorium. So, in a roundabout way, they got the auditorium, but we never had a discussion about this. Now, maybe that's not under our umbrella, but like salaries and all, that would be something we discuss here, in my opinion. That's true. And, and if anybody wanna jump in and explain this to me, how this happened, I'd be willing to, to listen. Mr. Choak told me that it was, uh, just, um, a breakdown, okay? I'm good with that. The breakdown that I had, that the orchestra, uh, the, the Black History Program, we should've sit down and we should've tried to figure out this together, instead of me getting called back and forth and saying, "Well, you can't, you ain't gonna be able to do your program, or you're gonna relocate." Do you know the stress that put on us? I mean, I literally didn't sleep any last night, 'cause I'm trying to figure out how we gonna contact all these people? They're supposed to be coming into Eldorado from Shreveport and Little Rock and other places, that we have to tell them that first, we were gonna have, ask could we go to the, the art center? Now, the, the, the auditorium and the art center is two different sizes. We want the people that we invited in, see, I've been stopped also. So, I wanna thank the mayor and Robert getting together and trying to do a last-minute proposal that if I didn't, we just accepted, I wanna thank our group for even entertaining the relocation.
Excuse me, Mr. McGee.
No, I've got five minutes.
I got sorry, you're at seven minutes.
No, I got five minutes, can I have a couple of your minutes?
Yeah.
So, my thing is, the problem I'm having is seem to be double standard, and that bothers me, because every taxpayer person pay a dollar down there, whether they live on the west, west side of town, east, north or south, pay for that auditorium, and we spending needless of dollars. Mr. Hash said that's the people building. So, why can't the people use the building when they want to, when they follow the process? So, that's the problem I have, and the next thing I'm, I'm doing, I'm using your last minute, we having a community forum at St. John on February the twentieth, and I don't think it's gonna be council, I, I, the, the deacon over there, he said we could have it there, at six o'clock. I'm inviting the mayor, I'm inviting the chief of police, I'm inviting whoever wanna come, but we want the citizens of Ward Three to come, 'cause I have so many phone calls of people complaining about things, having ideas about things, and when we get chance to come together, I don't know whether it's fair, I don't know whether they feel like people ain't gonna listen to them, or we just going through the same old motions, but I done spent twenty-two years of my life up here. I done went places where, where I didn't wanna go. I still went, even knowing that I, that I wasn't wanted there. But if we gonna make change, we got to start changing some of these ideas and the way we look at things, like, this is where we always have done it, and this is always we gonna do it. That's why we losing our young people. So, Mayor, I wanna thank you again, you're Mr., uh, Edmonds, for trying to relocate and, and I wanna thank our committee, Mr. Amika, Ms. Ms. Kelsey, and Madam Crell, for graciously entertaining us to be relocated. Now, the work is fit to happen, 'cause we gotta call all these people, all, and, and the community, and hopefully everybody was gonna come, to come to a place that we might not be able to hold everybody, they might not come, so that's a fact of, and this is Black History Month. I never heard, no one's come up and said, "We had a date in February," or anything, I heard we was gonna do something in February. I booked that December the fifteenth, so I'm just, I'm just saying, we have to do something as a council to make sure that don't happen, 'cause that done happened too many times, and I'm a city council, and it happened to me. I'm just trying to figure out how I'm the one got asked to be pushed aside. So, thank you, Mr. Hash, Mr. Choak, for your, your, your time, and thank you for your time, brother.
And you just hit ten minutes.
Thank you, good to go. So, he had five, I had five.
Okay. Roy? You don't have any time, brother.
Didn't you pass it over to me?
Yeah.
How you have all five minutes to Mr. Wood?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Hash, so, I'm just saying that, I'm telling you, this is something that we have to address, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
We have to start interacting together. We separate and segregate ourselves, because we feel like your event ain't our event, we feel like we not welcome you, you're not welcome, and that's a lie, 'cause everybody, ma'am, please, let me finish it, every, everybody pay tax dollars here in this city, everybody, everything y'all use, everybody pay for it, whether they wanna utilize it or not, they help pay for it. They gonna help pay for their horse arena. I don't ride no horses, I don't go to the rodeo, but my dollars out there, so wherever my dollars go, I oughta be able to go. I'm going. So, thank you. I have been to the orchestra, I have been to David's, so, let's, let's get on the ball, y'all, if we gonna really make change in Eldorado, let's start thinking as one instead of different segments and, and different groups. We gotta start thinking as one. So, thank you, we're the fit one, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Hash, for your five minutes.
Well, Mr. McGee, I, I do believe that was Robert's intention by hiring Beth to, to coordinate activities and also to take care of renting other properties we have that are available, so, that's the purpose, things, and let's see if the waters don't smooth, okay?
Yes, sir, but I still think we should've had that discussion. I appreciate what you're doing, 'cause I know what you're dealing with, but I just think we got to discuss more, we got to discuss more. I just think we need to discuss things so we'll be transparent.
Is there anything else to come for?
I'm gonna go adjourn.
I got something, sir.
You have three minutes left, Mr. Hash.
Thank you, thank you.
Hey-
I just wanna clarify what you said, something about we're not gonna spend any money, you had an agreement with Ms. Pam to-
Until that agreement- Until that agreement is completed, no monies will be distributed.
And they, the agreement being what?
A contract for service.
Okay.
Between the city and MADD and the operation of the place gate.
Okay.
Just wanna clarify that.
That's what it is.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Looking to adjourn.
Take a break.
Uh. David Hurst, actually, we're gonna do that. I need a second.
I'll second.
David Hurst.
Hi.
Frank Cash.
Hi.
Vance Williamson.
Uh.
Judy Ward.
Uh.
Willie McGee.
Uh.
Roy Bullock.
Hi.
Buddy McAdams.
Hi.
And Diane Hammond.